That's it, time is up. Moving on. Governmental reports. Look around. It's yours again.
I saw the chief out there. Hi Mayor.
The chief is running away.
Commissioners, good evening. Just don't have much to say today, other than the weather's changing and everything. Sometimes we get some storms out in the spring, get some wires down. Just advise people to stay 25 feet away from any wires. Whether they think they're cable lines or power lines, stay away from them. Stay away from the fences and everything, and call 911. Be glad to come out. That's all I got today, really.
That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Somebody gonna go after the chief, or we just forget it?
He's not in the building.
Alright, chief is not in the building. Move on. Next item, city commission liaison reports. We'll start with Commissioner Scott, historical commissioner.
Just a quick one for the historical commission. Mark your calendars for May 1st, from 6:00 to 7:00 p.m. Having an open house at the historical museum, it's a great opportunity to see what might, when information might exist about your home at the museum, to learn a little bit about the history of our city, and if you'd like to pitch in and help out for a home and garden tour, or other things that are coming up this year, another good opportunity to do that. So, mark your calendars.
Cool, 6:00 to 7:00 p.m.?
6:00 to 7:00.
Just one hour? Okay.
May 1st.
We can go back on the agenda, and would you like to come? No? Governmental reports?
Just your wisdom and guidance.
He rocks.
Thank you on both fronts.
He does. If I could believe him, I would. Next, Commissioner Wall, recreation commission.
I just got some water, so, okay. Okay, so the pancake breakfast is Saturday. And the egg hunt, okay, the breakfast is at 10:00 a.m., yes? And the egg hunt begins at 11:30. Cost is $4 for an adult and two for kids. Kids under 40, free. I don't think we're gonna card kids, though, but... You can register online or at the door. Junior Garden Club, which is really cute, for those of you who are interested. Meeting on the 30th of April at 3:45. Please pre-register. Kids will be making May Day baskets to share with the neighborhood. Leaders in Training Team Volunteer Program. LIT applications are now available at the rec center, or via email. LIT program is for teens currently enrolled in 7th grade or older. Deadline is May 6. FBI, I think this sounds interesting. The Kwame Files. Thursday, May 9th at the rec center, free, but must be pre-registered. Program begins at 9:30 a.m. Presentation includes details of the 38 indictments of the Kwame conspiracy. Citywide Garage Sale, Saturday, May 11th. I know, I know it's kind of a joke, they're not together. Citywide Garage Sale is Saturday, May 11th. Science are on sale at City Hall and the rec center. Cost is $25 for a permit. There's still a few openings in youth baseball. Co-ed, ages 7 to 11. T-ball, ages 5 and 6. And majors, ages 13 and 14, lanes are full. We're having youth tennis classes, which is new this year at Gainsborough Park. Yeah, that's cool. Ages 4 to 13. All tennis will be, Love All Tennis will be instructing the class. Okay, the last thing is registrations underway for swim team and summer camps. Don't delay. That's it.
Thank you very much. Next, Commissioner Kuziak, Ferndale Public Schools.
Thank you, Mayor. At the Ferndale School Board meeting on March 18th, we got a update from Sidney Embry. She's the University High School Student Liaison at University High School. And she gave us an update on the, I guess they had a really cool dodgeball game. Sounds like a lot of fun. It was students versus teachers. And it raised money for different programs throughout the school. This also sounded really fun. In honor of Black History Month, they had a door decorating contest throughout the school. And Sidney said that all the teachers and students really got into this and had some really beautiful doors to celebrate black history. At the monthly superintendent's excellence award, this is where one student is identified by superintendent for high achievement. This month, it went to Kiran Venigupal. He was there with his family, and it was very heartwarming. His mother and father were very proud of him, as they should have been, as they should be. He was described as curious, hardworking. He loves to be challenged. He's an accomplished musician. He actually performed, he was invited and did perform with the Detroit Symphony Orchestra. So he was recognized for his outstanding excellence. The eagle of the month, this goes to the teacher or staff member within Ferndale Schools who helps make the district run. This month, it went to the parent liaison at Ferndale Upper. Her name is Keisha Reed. And she was, again, just glowing praise for Keisha and what she does, day in, day out, for the students in the district. Really engaged students' minds, all during the week. At lunchtime, she sets up all these programs, based on social, emotional goals and learning with the kids at Upper Elementary School. Her empathy and kindness in support of the children and families of the district knows no bounds, as was described by the superintendent. This was also very sweet. Her young daughters were there, and they were beaming with pride for the example that their mother was setting. And so she was rightly, Keisha Reed was rightfully recognized for that. In the building pride segment, we talked about Ferndale High School, and especially the work of Maurice Telford. He's bringing computer science applications into the high school. This is something I didn't know, but only 35% of schools nationwide offer computer science classes. So Maurice is making sure that Ferndale is part of that group of schools. So they spend time doing self-guided projects on computer literacy and computer development. There's a large vision for the school, for going forward, for expanding the programming. And there's actually, they were awarded, they've already been awarded, an Amazon Future Engineer Grant. And Maurice will be guiding this grant program funded by Amazon for more curricular resources and instructional flexibility. And there'll also be an opportunity for Amazon internships for students who complete the program. And it's a pathway of advancement for computer, for kids in, at Ferndale and University High School. So that was a really exciting program. Some of the dates I wanted to make the community aware about. The CASA Open House is Saturday, April 27th. CASA is the Center for Advanced Studies in the Arts. This is a multi-district institution that is really, you know, a stellar example of, you know, bringing districts and communities to gather to celebrate learning in the arts and sciences. They've been doing this for 35 years. There'll be a CASA Expo on Saturday, April 27th at 9:30 at CASA. CASA, which is at 23561 Rosewood in Oak Park. And there'll be some alumni speakers, including Andy Meisner, who is our current Oakland County Treasurer, will be there to speak about the good things going on at CASA. And finally, I wanted to let the community know, this is another exciting, multi-community event. Stagecrafters in Royal Oak, the community theater, will be doing a production of Oklahoma next, it's coming up, it's one of their upcoming productions. And on Tuesday, May 14th at 8:00 p.m., they will be doing a benefit production of Oklahoma, and it benefits, and it will benefit special funding for Ferndale, Berkeley, and Royal Oak Education Foundations. So that's something to put on the calendar for Tuesday, May 14th. The problem is that that's exactly at our city commission meeting, so you'll have to make a decision if you want to go see Oklahoma and support the school districts, or come here and, you know, participate in local democracy. I'll leave that one up to you guys, but...
I may just take my gavel and go over there.
You can have a meeting there.
That's right.
But that's all I had.
Thank you. Commissioner Perry, planning DDA.
Thank you, Mayor. The planning commission and DDA has not met since our last city commission meeting, but we are meeting on Monday, April 22nd at 7:00 p.m., right here at City Hall. However, but also, I mean, our city manager does have an update that he wants to give us on planning.
Yeah. So, wanted to make the commission and the community aware of an upcoming project that MDOT is doing on the 696 Service Drive in Pleasant Ridge. They're gonna be making some changes to improve throughput at the intersection. We all know it gets pretty jammed up, particularly in the afternoon during rush hour. But given that we had done our own independent planning efforts in the past, most notably the charrette for the Woodward 696 study we did with Bob Gibbs and his team back in 2015, we were prepared, when they came to us and said that they were gonna be doing this project, to say, okay, well, can you also look at making these changes as well? And so, out of that, they went back and they did all their traffic modeling and studying, and these, this is what's gonna happen. So, this is, right here, you can see, I guess this is Main, and this is northbound Woodward and the Service Drive going on the freeway, going to the service, continuing on the Service Drive. So what's happening here is some pretty significant changes.
Yeah.
They're closing this southernmost lane by the triangle, which was rarely used. They're also putting in a bump out at this corner to shorten the crossing. They're extending the nose of this island southward to reduce the width there. So functionally, we're going from, currently, we have 1, 2, 3, 4 lanes here. Now, when you're crossing here on foot, it's gonna be 2 lanes.
Whoa.
2 and 1/2, maybe. But it's a pretty significant shortening. There's some other benefits of this as well. If you're pedestrian waiting to cross, the stop bar is still down here, so cars are, you're gonna be more visible, because you're further forward for a car turning right.
That's great.
And, you know, this is the same situation we have at Oakland Park, where if you're waiting to turn, you're looking this way, because it's where traffic is coming from. But with this bump out in there, it's gonna be difficult to turn on red, so this'll make crossing here safer for pedestrians. The rest of this is, both of these lanes are gonna go through. Both of these lanes can get on to the freeway, so you're still gonna have 2 direct lanes onto the freeway. Everyone using the alley as the backdoor into the east side, that's, you basically have a taper now that gets you down there. So when you're waiting to turn, you'll have a little bit of protection. So this should be a pretty significant improvement for, especially for pedestrians crossing.
Wow.
There's also some changes, and this is really, this is really what started the project. This is what MDOT was trying to address. This is southbound Woodward. This is the stoplight. This is coming off of 696 here, and this is where that crossover is.
By the zoo?
Yes, by the zoo. So here, what's happening is, MDOT is eliminating this taper, and they're shortening the island here, so they're actually lengthening this crossing a little bit. So now, the turn lanes will have more stacking space. Because right now, what happens is, this lane stacks up all the way back, because it's a lane you need to use for both of the turn lanes to go north onto Woodward through the intersection. So that jams up, and then everyone has to get into this lane. By opening up this here, you'll have 2 lanes of stacking that go further back, which should help increase the amount of traffic they can move through this intersection when you do get the light, hopefully reduce some of those backups. The crossing here is getting longer, but this is not as much of a concern, because you've got a stoplight here, and then all of the traffic turns here. You don't have anybody moving through this segment of the street when this light is red, so if you're a pedestrian crossing here, you still have time to make it across. But they're also eliminating this southernmost lane.
Oh, okay.
So now, you'll be, there's still 2 right turn lanes onto southbound 696. It just won't be this dedicated turn lane south. So this'll be converted back to green space. So this has a benefit of then somewhat shortening this crossing here. Instead of 6 lanes, it'll be 5. It's not obviously optimal for pedestrian crossing there, but I suppose it is 16% better. So that's an improvement as well. And then you can see here, because this is on a bridge, I'm not sure they're extending a curb, or if this will be paint. Not sure on that yet, but this southernmost lane is closing here, because also, as you continue east, this is where the lane will be closed, attached to the island.
Wow.
So this should...
That'll be interesting. That's what we were looking at.
Yeah.
This is kind of what we want.
Yeah, so they've just incorporated this in their project. This is why it pays to be prepared. And you do the plan in 2015, and in 2019, it finally pays dividends, because we're ready. Prepared for the end of this. They've done all the modeling on this. It should improve traffic throughout this whole congested area, but it should also improve pedestrian safety 24 hours a day, particularly at that Main Street crossing, which is a pretty heavily used pedestrian and bike crossing.
Oh, for sure.
That's great.
So, be ready for this. This'll be coming, so there'll be a little bit of construction going on.
You said that's this year?
It'll be this year, yes.
Excellent.
So I think maybe end of May, early June, they may be starting, but they don't have the construction dates set yet.
Well, thank you, MDOT.
Yeah. So I mean, I do have to give, I do have to give a lot of credit to MDOT, because they were great to work with on this. They, you know, took our concerns seriously. They went back, they modeled everything, and they said, yeah, okay.
That's great.
Good job. They can drop us 35 bucks an hour, we could be...
Easy.
I can say this from experience now, but Rome wasn't built in there.
Out of curiosity, are there improvements in that section of Washington that curves in and under the zoo?
They are, they are doing work there as well. The plans I had, I don't think were fully developed for that yet, so I'm not sure exactly what's going on there. But they are working there.
But they're not gonna drop 3 to 2 lanes, so...
No, but I think they're working to get that crossing, the pedestrian crossing, across that bridge to widen that.
Yeah, good.
That's their chief goal there.
So they don't have to walk on the streets, as we see them.
So you don't see everyone with the baby strollers lying up across the track.
Exactly. Terrific.
So that should be an improvement as well. So I don't know exactly what they look like.
So I like having a special guest in my liaison report. It makes it more... Thank you. Thanks, Jim.
You may want to work on...
I know.
Everybody's gonna be envious. Can't wait to see who Brett brings up. Okay. Any questions or comments for... Moving on. Next item is the consent agenda. We've got 10 items, and I'm just going to ask for a motion to approve.
Mayor, I move the consent agenda be approved.
Suck it.
Any discussion? Alright, can we have a vote, please?
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Wall?
Yes.
Commissioner Kuziak?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Dan Metzger?
Yes. Motion carries. You sound so... I'm so sorry. Poor Amy. Poor Amy has a spring cold. Next items. Ordinance to amend Chapter 42, Offenses and Miscellaneous Provisions, Article 4, Offenses Against Public Peace, Section 42-85. Definitions. National Holiday in Section 42-86, Ignition, Discharge, and Use of Consumer Fireworks. Before we open the public hearing, Jim, you want to just give us the brief?
Yes.
We've done this before.
I think this is the third month we've talked about this.
Yes, I think so.
State law change at the end of last year. Governor Snyder, one of the last things he did was sign into the law, a change to the fireworks regulations at the state level. This allows local communities to reduce the number of days that fireworks are allowed to be blown off, and we are taking advantage of that. So the proposed ordinance would limit the number of days that fireworks can be shot off in Pleasant Ridge to the minimum allowed by state law. All the information's in the packet. And if you have any questions, you have...
Anybody have any questions? Okay. I will open the public hearing. Anybody who wants to discuss fireworks ordinances?
Yay!
Somehow, I didn't expect anybody to get up. Close the public hearing. Do I have a motion?
Your Honor, I move ordinance 435, amending Chapter 42, Offenses and Miscellaneous Provisions, Article 4, Offenses Against Public Peace, Section 42 through 85. Definitions. National Holiday and Sections 42 through 86, Ignition, Discharge, and Use of Consumer Fireworks be adopted.
Thank you.
Second.
Is it second?
Second.
Can I hear that? Okay. Any discussion? May we have a vote, please?
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Kuziak?
Yes.
Commissioner Wall?
Yes.
Dan Metzger?
Yes. Motion carries. Next item, ordinance to amend Chapter 42, Offenses and Miscellaneous Provisions, Article I, in general, by the definition, or by the addition of a new section, Section 42-14, Marijuana Establishments prohibited. Before the public hearing, Jim, again, a few words?
Yes. Another item that we've been discussing for, I think, more than 3 months now. But this is the ordinance that would opt us out of allowing recreational marijuana establishments, i.e. businesses, to locate in Pleasant Ridge. As we've discussed, we're proceeding on a parallel track, where this ordinance, per the recreational marijuana law, communities have to proactively opt out. If we don't, then a recreational marijuana establishment can apply for a license to the state to locate in Pleasant Ridge, and we have to accept it at that point. So this is a protection to the city, to make sure that no one can locate a business in Pleasant Ridge until we're ready to allow that, if we are ready to allow that in the future. The other track is, we are, we're proceeding with a community survey, and trying to gauge the community's interest in this issue, knowing that we have some unanswered issue, questions around the recreational marijuana law. We're looking to get some input there. We'll be doing a public here, or a town hall, rather, later in the summer, to get further input and discussion around this item. There's a couple of things that are gonna happen, this AIDs, or adopt their licensing regulations, that probably won't clarify some of the gray areas in the law that we need to know about, that directly impact our local regulation of these types of uses. So what we're doing here is taking a wait-and-see approach. This can be, is we're passing this ordinance, we can pass an ordinance in the future that would establish a permitting and licensing process for Pleasant Ridge, once we're ready to do that. So, have you had any answer, any questions you have, any further detail on any, any of the moving parts of this? You got any answered questions? Greg is here. We can talk to any of the legal issues that you may have questions on, but with that, I'll turn it back to you.
Anybody who want, Jim? No? I just wanted to update folks that we're up to 245 survey responses, which is, for a Pleasant Ridge survey, is very good, but we want to encourage more. The surveys open until May the 8th. It's only 7 questions. Goes pretty quick.
Takes 2 minutes.
Yeah, we really encourage everybody to weigh in on this, so you've done a good job so far. Keep them coming. Any other discussion before I open?
Regarding the survey, there is a great summary upfront as well, that gives a lot of information, so if you still have a lot of questions before you're going to take the survey, it helps lay things out.
Okay. With that, I will open the public hearing.
When do you anticipate a vote on this, then?
First, can you, if you have questions, can you come up and say your name and your address?
Oh.
Sorry. That's all right. This is our...
Okay. Lisa Mueller, I'm at 37 Sylvan. And that was the question. When do you anticipate, like, a formal vote about the ordinance? Or are you wanting to vote on this tonight?
We're voting tonight on the opt-out portion.
Do you have any, like, legal studies or anything like that regarding other cities of why this ordinance is coming about?
Well, probably over 300 communities, I believe, in Michigan have opted out at this point. The, as Jim mentioned, the ballot initiative that was voted in in November specifically allows communities to make that choice. They can change their mind at any time. As far as studies, I mean, there have been a lot of studies done with regard to the effect of this. There are a lot of unanswered questions, and I can't speak for all the other communities that have acted, but I believe in many instances, they are taking the wait-and-see approach that the city manager indicated, to wait for the state to adopt their regulations, which has to be done, you know, by, you know, later, by later this year, and then make a determination as to whether the city actually wants to allow these establishments within its boundaries.
So you basically have no studies? Because no studies were published on the Pleasant Ridge website, regarding what studies, regarding crime and the effects on the community?
There, I'm not sure that anything was published on the city's website. There are studies from other states. I can't cite them to you at this point. There have been studies on the financial impact of this, pro or con, that have been done by the Michigan Legislature, and that is available as part of their information. But to answer your question, Pleasant Ridge has done the study itself, and because of the volume of unanswered questions as to how, the practical effect and the implementation of the ballot proposal, I'm not sure that a lot of studies at this time have been very meaningful.
I think passing this ordinance is a little premature, if you don't have all the adequate information. It sounds like no one really knows anything, except a group of, a couple of people who are against it, and if the Michigan voters voted for it, I hate to say it, but a group of 4 to 5 people to say no, it's kind of infringing on my rights if I voted for that in Michigan law.
Well, as the city manager said, we are voting to opt out at present time?
Then we all vote to re-opt in.
We can opt in, we can, once we have, once the state has written their regulations to a point that we know what options we have when we write an ordinance. Right now, we don't know, there's 6 different types of businesses. We don't know if we can select one or the other. We don't know if they, you know, you get all or none, depending on who. We don't know about locations. We don't know about look of, you know, whether we can control how these businesses look, those kinds of things. And until we get more information, we're opting out as a, as a holding pattern. We're getting, we're gathering information from the community, what they want. We know that the city voted 74% for recreation. What we're seeing is a lot of the responses are because people wanted to see it decriminalized. That was the big issue in seeing people get out of prison that had been put in because of small drug offenses. Other people just want recreational marijuana. Or they, they want to smoke it, but they may not want to buy it here. They may want to go to Ferndale, or Berkeley, or something like that, or Royal Oak, but...
And if I'm right.
Yeah.
The only thing we're opting out of is allowing a business to locate here.
Correct.
Yeah. So, you know, we were in a meeting with Representative Levin, and he said, can you buy a hammer in Pleasant Ridge? No. But you can go to Ferndale, or Royal Oak, and, you know, you can buy it there.
Well, if I was interested in it, maybe I don't want to go to 8 Mile. I don't want to go to Detroit. Maybe I just want to go somewhere in my community. Especially if I was a chronic pain patient or whatnot, I don't want to go to Detroit to do it. They opened one in Wall Lake, it was completely packed with people.
Right, so that's, and the issue is, we don't have...
That's recreational.
We don't have, because we haven't had a lot of experience with these, we don't know what the side impacts of these businesses are.
Right.
So it's a, it's a risk management. It could be, it could have a great impact on a small city like Pleasant Ridge. Or it could have none, but we don't know yet. So that's part of the wait-and-see approach, is let's get some experience with some of these businesses and other communities, and see if it's a fit for Pleasant Ridge in the future.
We also have issues around location. We have limits as to where anybody could possibly locate.
Well, I think you should look at 74% of your people wanted it, before you...
Well, that's why, that's why we've got a survey. That's why we have a public hearing, we're gonna have a town hall. We're certainly listening to the public.
Well, I think you might want to put off your ordinance ban.
But we can, if we put the opt-out now, we can opt in at any time.
I know, but then it requires another vote, another hearing, et cetera, and then that's quite an ordeal.
It would be an ordeal either way.
It's another ordeal. That's what I'm saying. But anyways, that's my two cents.
Thank you very much.
Shay Bukema, 20 Kensington. I am disappointed that Pleasant Ridge is not taking a leadership role here, that we're being skittish and trepidatious. I have every confidence that the people who are sitting in front of me have the ability I have every confidence that the people who are sitting in front of me have the ability to draft an ordinance, a plan, that would protect the character and the nature of Pleasant Ridge and still allow the response to the vote of the people. We can, during this time that, that the state is figuring things out or whatever, we could design how we want this to be. We could make a plan for an optimum way to provide these opportunities in our city. We allow the sale of alcohol. We have liquor licenses, I think there are, what, two for the city? It's not a problem. We could do the same thing with marijuana, with a J, or any way you want to spell it. Yes, there is a difference between medical marijuana and recreational marijuana, but there are benefits of recreational marijuana for people who are suffering. And it's a lot easier, it will be a lot easier, for people to access that relief than it will be to perhaps get a medical marijuana card, because there is a lengthy process that one needs to go through in order for that to happen. So I, I, I hear you saying that this, that the tone of what you're saying sounds as though this is already a fait accompli, that any vote that there is tonight is pro forma, that the decision is made to opt out for now. And I am unhappy, I'm disappointed, and I, I have trust and faith in all of you to be able to design this and to do it now and to be ready to take a leadership role in this. We could, Pleasant Ridge is an admirable community. No one wants to see that change, and there's no reason for it to change, but these are the times that we're in, and this is the voice of the vote, and I want to see us be responsive to that. That's my thought on the minute.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hi, Don McGuire, Portland, Fairwood. I'm just curious if there are any types of potential revenue projections from allowing a facility in the city.
The answer to that is there are not. You hear examples from other states, but every state has its own taxing regime, its own distribution of monies. So Colorado collects a different percentage of sales than California does, and that's different than Washington, and they distribute back to local communities at different percentages than Michigan. So the, the answer to that question is no. We have no idea what our potential tax revenue would be from this.
But isn't that part of the, the original bill? It's fairly well-established, isn't it?
They, they project how much revenue they think it will generate in total, the state does, but what gets distributed back to local communities is dependent on how many establishments you have versus everyone else. So the state can, the state says, yeah, we think that this will generate twenty-six million dollars of tax revenue in 2022. How much of that would Pleasant Ridge get? We have no way of, of knowing. If we allowed one recreational marijuana establishment, but we were one out of five hundred in the state, then we would get one five-hundredth of the percentage of that twenty-six million that was distributed to local communities, and we just don't know. So it's, it's basically just a guessing game at this point, what the revenue would be for local communities.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If I, if I could, Jim, and I appreciate that answer, and I would agree with you, we don't know. And there are estimates from the state. They are included in the packet. That's online, that, like Ann said, it's at the beginning of the survey. I don't think the, the revenue numbers are in there, but in tonight's packet and in the previous month's packet, there's all the information. This is the third meeting, I think, we've talked about this. So I think if you look at the last three packets, Jim and Greg did a great job of piecing together the background. But the state estimates, like Jim mentioned, in 2022 are looking at upwards of twenty-six point nine million dollars. Those are state, that's a state figure. That would be, that's parceled out, identified for municipalities. So that's after the state takes their cut for running the program. That's after, there's some school aid funding. There's also some funding that is going to go to medical research for marijuana use for PTSD. So all that revenue is going to be distributed, but it does highlight for municipalities who do allow establishments, like Jim correctly said, in 2022, they're looking at splitting a pot of twenty-seven, almost twenty-seven million dollars. And like Jim said, depending on how many municipalities opt in, and depending on how many dispensaries or, or establishments are in the state of Michigan, that number's going to be divvied up by that way. So, I mean, I just did a little simple math, and like Jim said, if there's five hundred, five hundred of twenty-seven million is still fifty-three thousand dollars. I mean, that's not nothing. That's, you know, we, that's for a community of our size, I know we could, I've been looking at budgets for eight years, we could spend fifty-three thousand dollars around the city of Pleasant Ridge. So, yes, I think it's entirely true to say, we don't know, honestly, how much is at stake here. But I do think it's not nothing. And, I mean, that's what we're dealing with, and that's part of, like the mayor's saying, that a lot of this, we don't know. A lot of this is going to work itself out. But I do think the revenue side of it is something that deserves some consideration, even short of having definitive answers of, yes, if we do this, this is how much money we're going to make or bring in, so.
Greg, just to clarify, there's six different types of businesses identified, right? And not all of them paying?
Not all of them will generate revenue, that's correct.
Right.
Or generate the tax revenue.
And we don't know, we don't know right now whether we can specify what type of business, that we will only accept a retailer. We could accept a, a wholesaler could want to locate here, a retailer not, right?
That is correct. That's one of the ambiguities and gray areas of the law that we've talked about before. And the Free Press had an article a few days ago, where the gentleman who's responsible for developing rules indicates that it's a gray area as to whether or not you can pick and choose among the various kinds of license titles.
So there is that we could write this wonderful ordinance, but, yeah.
And if we had to tweak it, we could tweak it after we get more information, but we could design it.
Well, that's why we're hoping to get more information and then, yeah. Amy, we also got, oh, I'm sorry.
The other point, the ballot initiative that seventy-four percent of the people voted for specifically allows every city council, township board, and village council to opt in or opt out. So just to say that X number of people voted for the proposal doesn't necessarily mean that those people automatically were voting to allow facilities, and I think that's one of the reasons why it's great that your survey has that particular question, why did you go for it? And do you want it?
Do you want?
Yes, no, or maybe.
Amy, we also got some...
We received eight emails in favor of adopting the opt-out ordinance, and further saying that they would prefer not to have facilities located within the city.
Is there anyone else?
I have some information that...
Yes, please.
...clear up some of this.
Yes.
Good evening, everybody. The Michigan Association of Chiefs of Police has been monitoring this since it became an initiative on the ballot way back September, October, and prior to that. There's communication among all the chiefs across the state. As far as the three hundred communities that have so far opted out, that's basically, they're looking at what they think is going to be at the state level. Eighty percent of cities opting out. Many of the communities are playing a wait-and-see game to see what their neighboring communities are doing. So they didn't want to jump the gun. So that's what they're waiting for. As far as, and the Chiefs of Police, and I'd be happy to make copies for you for information, but this one was written in the New York Times, January of this year, and this one was in the Washington Post from January of this year. It talks about Canada's legalization, as well as California's, and the money side of it. The biggest thing that they are seeing is, and they predicted California to have a billion-dollar tax revenue. What they saw was three hundred and twenty million, not the billion. And the hard part, excuse me, was convincing Californians to buy marijuana legally, because with the legalization of marijuana, now you have a business front, taxes, the fees, the licensing, all that. So the price was driven up, the price point. People were still going to their, as Canada found out, going to their black market or buying it illegally and avoiding the place. Well, in the places that control that, they're finding are still organized crime that is offering at a lower price to people, or they're finding big conglomerates that are opening huge factories in California and Arizona and Colorado to produce this and then control the market or whatever. So these articles, and I won't go into them all here, I can make copies and have them for you if you want. This addresses that the tax revenue, they're not seeing it because people are still buying it illegally and not legally, and that's the biggest thing. And like I said, most communities are playing a wait-and-see game to see what their neighboring communities are doing.
You can also grow your own. You can also grow up to twelve plants.
Correct. And I also have new information. It just came, my email yesterday, I made copies of this, and it addresses medical, usable products, qualifying patient and recreational thing, marijuana. The only thing is, like it says, the only thing a city or municipality can do is vote to opt out of the business side. It's not anything else. It's still legal to possess, transport, have, obviously not use a vehicle, that's still against the law, but it addresses all that. So I can make copies and have all these available at the desk if you want. And it'll help answer a lot of your questions for the upcoming town hall and stuff. And by then, I hope to have a lot more information, as because this is new to Michigan, studies weren't done, you can try to assess what, what your profits would be, but other communities and other states are not seeing the profits that were predicted, so I don't see why we would feel privileged to see that here.
Well, if I could, I mean, you introduced this same point, I think, two meetings ago, and I looked into it, and I looked at the article that you referenced. And in the article, they're saying, one of the reasons the tax revenue in California is lower than expected is because municipalities are opting out. There's not enough municipalities who have opted in, so the projected revenue increase is not there, because a lot of the communities are scared to adopt these policies, and there's no revenue coming in. So, yes, the point is, do we want to drive people to these illegal markets? Do we want to say, you know what, this is legal in our state, but we're not, you're not going to be able to buy it anywhere, so you know what, it's probably better to go buy your dime bags where you've been buying them? And to me, this whole process is about taking what was illegal, taking what was dangerous, taking what was controlled by nasty elements that you deal with your entire career, and moving that into a regulated, safe, and structured environment, where we're, where you're not having to deal with drug dealers, where you can show up at any time at the drug dispensary and say, hey, you got your papers? Hey, is this all in order? To me, that's a preferable way to address it. And I understand your position, and the, and the police officer's position has been well-known, right? I mean, the organization that you referenced was against the ballot initiative. They continue to be, you know, hesitant to really endorse this as the new reality, and as somebody who's a crucial component of this, right? Law enforcement is a crucial component of making sure this whole thing, this whole progress between taking something that was illegal, making it legal, which was the same as that, from prohibition, right? Going from prohibition, right? So to me, yes, I appreciate the perspective of the Police Officers Association, but I also understand that, you know, this was a resident-initiated petition. It was approved statewide, it was approved locally. So that's what we're dealing with here. And again, I respect your position, and I appreciate the information that you brought forward.
And I think we addressed it at the last meeting, was the, the whole point of us addressing it this way, as far as a police protect, police position, is protecting the residents of this community if, because those places draw an element of criminal activity about them, and that's our concern, is protecting the residents of the city. So that's our point of view.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So all this information I'll have, if you want copies of it, at the desk.
Yeah, and I think further, and again, this is not saying final no. I mean, this is still waiting to hear from the community. But saying fifty-three thousand dollars possible here, we have no idea what the ancillary costs to the city are...
Right.
...to monitor a business, a cash business right now. I mean, we don't, I mean, we don't know if it's going to, what it's going to cost.
Or that it is a cash business. We don't even know.
Right.
We don't know what kind of business it is.
We don't know if they'll be able to change it, we don't know anything. So, I mean, there's so many questions right now, so. Any other? Okay. Close the public hearing? We'll move on to if I have a motion to approve the opt-out.
Your honor, I move the ordinance four thirty-six, amending Chapter forty-two offenses and miscellaneous provisions, Article One, in general, by the addition of a new section, Section forty-two through fourteen, marijuana establishments prohibited. Second?
Okay. Any further discussion before we take a vote?
Well, does anyone else? I mean, I, I do have an opinion, I want to talk, I mean, if somebody else wants to talk.
Do you have anything new?
What do you mean it's new?
We've been through this for two months.
Four months.
Yeah. I mean, you have more new information to bring into the discussion.
Okay. I appreciate that, Mayor. I just would like to involve Greg on this. This is the law as approved, the MRTMA. And one of the questions we've been all dealing with is, can we zone these, can we not zone these? Because I think for me, and this is somebody, I'm in favor of having these in our city, but not everywhere in our city. I don't want them in residential communities. My preference, and I'm glad the survey allowed this as a choice, I, I think the Iron Ridge Marketplace would be a great place to kind of start an initial project like this. I think it's a unique opportunity for a city of our size to take advantage of, you know, of, of a zoned area like that. And Greg, if I could just, on, I don't know, do you have the...
I've got it, the Yak itself, yes.
Yeah. So I'm looking specifically at Section nine, and if you look at nine, three, C, right, this is talking about where the state will approve licenses. It will not approve a license if they're looking to zone in a residential area. Am I reading that correctly?
That's correct.
Okay. So at least we can say that the state law, as adopted and stands now, we will not have these in a residential area.
Well, the, again, the language of the initiative says land zone exclusively for residential use. A lot of communities have non-residential uses in their residential classes, like schools, like other kinds of facilities. I don't, off the top of my head, know what Pleasant Ridge has a broader list of allowed uses in a residential zoning district, but it doesn't mean that just because it's a neighborhood, they would not possibly be allowed to locate there.
Yeah.
Because it says exclusively for residential use.
Okay.
That's different than, you know, being...
Yeah.
...used.
Well, I just know time and place and manner, right, is identified, and that's the sticking point legally that we're all trying, like the mayor said, to get some guidance on from the state. And like you're saying, and Jim has said, that is probably going to have to be litigated at some point. But one thing I feel comfortable, based on, you know, precedent, is that cities have the fundamental ability to zone. It's, there's an act, a zoning, a zoning-enabling act approved by the legislature that gives cities that particular, particular ability. I don't see how, in this instance, the law is going to be interpreted in a way that strips municipalities of that right. Granted, anything's possible, but I think that would be, you would have an uproar across the state if suddenly, you know, it was deemed possible for your neighbor to mow down their house and put up a dispensary. Granted, I don't believe that's likely, but our ability to zone, I'm confident in. So I know it's not established a hundred percent, but going forward, that's the assumption I have. I'm really glad that the survey identified that and gave residents an opportunity to say, hey, I would be comfortable here. I'm going to, if I could just read this, it's my time, and then I'll... I'm gonna, if I could just read this, it's my time, and then I'll, we can move on.
What are we?
Go for it.
Thank you, Commissioners. Six months ago in Pleasant Ridge, 1,314 of us voted to legalize recreational use, possession, and sale of marijuana in the state of Michigan. As has been noted, that was 74% of the votes taken on Prop 1 here in our city. That is a very significant majority, and one would undoubtedly interpret that as a resounding endorsement to end the criminalization of marijuana in our great state. What is less clear is how all of us feel about what comes next after legalization. Do we feel comfortable decriminalizing the personal adult use of marijuana, but definitely do not want establishments selling these products in our community? Or are we all right with a business selling marijuana, as long as they abide by an ordinance crafted by us to reflect the character of our town and the concerns of our neighbors? How do we apply this new legal reality into policy, not statewide, but closer to home, here in Pleasant Ridge? Well, that is the discussion we are engaged in tonight, and I hope we'll continue to be engaged in as we talk more about this issue and learn more about this issue. We will learn more from the Michigan Bureau of Marijuana Regulation, they're going to be issuing the upcoming rules, and we will learn more from the survey currently running on our website, which allows us all to weigh in on this matter. The way I look at this is, we are just getting this conversation started. As we all contribute to this conversation, my position continues to be that we are uniquely positioned as a city to harmoniously integrate any business into our community. The law gives municipalities of this state the right to craft ordinances that limit the number of businesses and set guidelines, much like our liquor control ordinance does now. Under this power granted by the state, we would craft an ordinance fundamentally constructed to address concerns on everything from hours of operation, to location, to parking availability. Under Section 6.2 of the Michigan Regulation and Taxation of Marijuana Act, municipalities are enabled to adopt local ordinance that reflect their community's priorities, as long as the local rules are not unreasonably impractical. Yes, many have focused on the term "unreasonably impractical," as legally tenuous and advance that as a reason not to craft any ordinance at all. But I respectfully disagree. The state of Michigan's administrative rules for medical marijuana are very exhaustive, covering everything from requiring security cameras, building inspections, and proof of insurance for all applicants. These rules will serve as a template for recreational marijuana rules statewide and provide guidance for how we could craft a local ordinance covering similar ground. I have the utmost confidence that our city manager and our city attorney have not only the legal authority, but the personal ability to work out a local law with input from both elected officials and concerned residents that protects our interests and stays well-clear of accusations of unreasonable impractical. As long as any potential ordinance clearly states the expectations for applicants, and that enforcement of those expectations and the application procedure itself follows firmly-established legal precedent regarding due process and equal protection, then threats of litigation can be reduced. Of course, no action by any governing body is immune to threats of litigation, but I continue to have confidence that PR can adapt an exemplary local statute that matches any applicant's desire for fairness, protects the character of our city, and also significantly reduces frivolous lawsuits. A crucial component of my desire to see an ordinance adopted in our community is that it gives us control over who we allow to do business here. Opting in does not allow every applicant to set up shop in Pleasant Ridge. Crafting our own ordinance and setting our own standards gives us control over the applicants we approve or we deny. Just because we have an ordinance does not automatically mean that we have shops. The way I see it, we establish an ordinance, we limit the number of licenses, and we approve only upon our own collective satisfaction. To me, that could be a process that is open, collective, cautious when it needs to be, and ultimately protective of our city. It represents the welcoming nature that I believe is fundamental to the spirit of our hometown, while also instituting a framework that most of us can be comfortable with. The state of Michigan has until December 6 to issue their regulations and begin processing applications. In my mind, that gives us enough time to look at citizen feedback on this, consider the state regulations when released, and formulate a sample ordinance incorporating both of these vital components. I would vote to temporarily opt out tonight if we could also agree to formulate a sample ordinance for the commission and our residents to consider in the coming months. To me, voting to opt out tonight while also committing to work on a sample ordinance covers all our bases and responds reasonably to the different viewpoints held by our neighbors. It commits us only to developing an option, it doesn't commit us to opting in, it only brings into focus what an option, what an opting in could look like. To me, that is a cautious, practical, and equitable step to take in the course of action that I would support tonight. Opting out while also agreeing to formulate a sample ordinance within a timeframe established by the city commission, after the issuance of the Michigan Bureau of Marijuana Regulation rules on recreational use. That's what I prepared to say, I wrote it out so it would hit the points I wanted to make, but that's how I feel on this issue.
Okay. Thank you. Long time. Any other?
Just a couple of quick comments. We often focus on the retail establishment without thinking of the other five businesses that might also impact the city, growing and transporting the other five kinds of businesses that are at play. If we needed to spend as much time as we have on the other five that we have on retail, for me, it's clear why we need to take the time. We don't really understand what it means to the city to look at all six when we have spent so much time focusing on just the one, and all six could have an impact. So, for me, an opt-out vote is really to take the time to understand what it might mean to the city, not only from a legal perspective, but also from a perspective of the character of the city and all the other things that are important to the city. So, this is not a, at least for me, an opt-out forever, this is us taking the prudent step of taking our time to make the right decisions for the city. And looking at all six businesses that might take a foothold in the city, if we're good or bad things, who knows, not just the one that is driving the most emotional input at this time.
Thank you. May I agree with you? Thank you. You know, I know there was the concern about proximity, if we opt out as a community. And from what we know, the other cities close to us, Ferndale and Hazel Park and Berkeley are all opting in. Someone told me today they thought Royal Oak was, I don't know that for sure. So, my concern doesn't, you know, while 74% of our residents voted to support this, and I voted to support it because I believe we need to, the decriminalization was really important, I think proximity is not going to be an issue at all. I think opting out now and taking our time to see over time, you know, and it's not like on December 2, all of a sudden we see that, you know, we can write whatever rules. We also want to see what impact that has. Because the city manager made this point a couple meetings ago, was that we are, you know, we are so small, and if we put in a business that has an adverse effect on the community, if it goes in on Woodward, and it has to go in on Woodard or something, or in Iron Ridge, and it has a negative impact around that, that can ruin, that has a much greater impact on Pleasant Ridge. So taking our time, there is no loss in us waiting and being very well, like, informed on the impact from everybody. Also, what was, the other one is, you know, my concern with the Iron Ridge location is, you know, for Pleasant Ridge, that's also drawing more police officers over there, if you have to, because this is going to require more policing, you're talking about a cash business probably. And it just, it just would draw resources away from the city, that I think, you know, while you may gain a little from tax revenue, we don't know the, what the cost could be. And, you know, it's a lot of the things. I think, you know, a wait-and-see approach is a really good one for us to be cautious. And we didn't jump into liquor licenses, we didn't jump into, you know, to many things like that. Our DDA is a nice little careful section of our city, and the houses are really close on both the east and west side. You know, you look at where the J&amp;L Productions business office is, or the oil, oil change place, it backs right up to the community. So, we just want to make sure to protect. I mean, my perspective is, I'd really like to make sure that it's not going to have any adverse effect on the community. So, thank you, Mayor.
Just, you reminded me, even if the effects are really good for the city, even if the business is a good idea for the city, think about the kinds of things that have come into this meeting in the last few years. It's about parking, it's about traffic congestion, it's traffic calming, all of these things are easy to eat $50,000 of revenue.
Right.
So, that's the kind of thing that takes time to figure out as we decide how to handle this. And I think I said this a couple of meetings ago, it's like, if Dunkin' Donuts wanted to open a shop in Pleasant Ridge, where would we put it? How do we manage a business that gets cars moving in and out every five to 10 minutes? Those are the kinds of things that, even if the business itself is a really good idea, and it turns out that it's the, you know, a pop boutique, for lack of a better way to describe it.
Right.
There's no easy way to put that, to put that into Pleasant Ridge without very careful planning. So, all of that is a part of what we have to go through when we think about any business, let alone a dispensary or some kind of retail establishment, or a trucking establishment that might have, you know, eight trucks parked in Pleasant Ridge, driving down Woodward Heights, I have to say. So, we have to, we have to think about all of that while we're, while we're going through this.
And to piggyback on that, it's the Starbucks thing. Like, we all want a coffee shop here, but there's no feasible way to handle the parking. And so, it's sort of that thinking.
Mayor, can I just make a quick comment? Everything's been said, but I just want to state how I feel. I'm comfortable with us taking a wait-and-see approach, and I think we're doing the right thing with the survey, we're asking people for feedback, we're taking the time to be thoughtful, we're having a town hall. I'm comfortable with all these things and weighing our options.
No, and I'm just going to say that Commissioner Krzyak, in your statement, you pretty much said you're comfortable with the wait-and-see. I think people, whether we're drafting something or just thinking about a resolution going, you know, an ordinance going forward, as, as we learn more information, that's, that's our thought process, is we learn more information, then we start to think about how feasible is it. And I, the other thing is, people who say, wouldn't it be nice, let's put it over in Iron Ridge? Well, the people who run Iron Ridge have a say in this. This is not just, we say we want a business over there. If Iron Ridge doesn't want a marijuana business, we're not going to get a marijuana business. So, you know, you got to think about, this is all well and good what you want, but you made some great, you know, both of you made great statements on the kinds of businesses and what the ancillary issues are there with them. So I think, again, we've kind of said it over and over again, I think we're, probably, I don't know who else, we've heard some people say they voted for the, for marijuana, I voted for marijuana. I've been voting for marijuana for years. Outside of that. But, but that's not it, that's not, I mean, we're talking about the issue of, when we don't know what the specifics are, we just want to think this thing through and be very thoughtful about this process, so.
Mayor? As a point of order, Commissioner Krzyak suggested an amendment to the motion, if we need to vote, and then decide whether there's another motion.
Well, I didn't, I mean, that would be my intention, I'm prepared to make a motion to amend. My, my motion to amend would be to adopt the motion as stated and just add that in, within a timeframe determined by the city commission.
We already motion in second. There's a motion on the floor, then we have to vote.
I just wanted to address what you'd said, without...
Right, but I can amend the motion on the floor.
You can request that the maker, who was Commissioner Perry, allow a friendly amendment to her motion.
Well, I think any commission member can ask to amend, whether friendly or not, they can request that the...
It would be made entirely in friendship.
It is a friendly.
No, I think the amendment would have to be made, someone would have to support it.
Yeah, it would have to be supported.
And you would vote on the amendment, and if the amendment passed, and you vote on the main motion as amended, if the amendment fails, you smoke, go on the original motion.
So, to answer Commissioner Scott's question, I would make an amend, I would make a motion to amend the motion to include a development of a sample ordinance for consideration by the city commission in the presence of Pleasant Ridge.
Sorry, no.
Is there any support? We'll vote on the, we have a motion on the table? Can we take the vote?
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Wall?
Yes.
Commissioner Krzyak?
No.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Mayor Oscar?
Yes.
Next item, interlocal agreement between the city of Pleasant Ridge and the city of Ferndale regarding certain building department services.
Yes. What is before you is an amended interlocal agreement that we have with the city of Ferndale. We adopted this a few years ago, specific to the Iron Ridge project, just because that being a large industrial project and also straddling both communities' boundaries. We wanted to make sure that we were ready, if needed, to use Ferndale's larger staff and deeper pool of knowledge to do inspections, or even to just have one inspector inspecting the buildings on both sides of the, of the corporate boundaries there. Since then, we've, it's been useful to have backup from Ferndale for a number of items. We're actually using their inspectors now to do rental inspections, because they have rental inspectors who specialize in that. And we've used them in some instances where our inspectors have been on vacation for regular inspections, so that we can continue to inspect projects for, for people while we were without an inspector here for a couple weeks. The original interlocal agreement does not cover those types of additional services. Ferndale's been willing to do that for us, but they want to expand, just so that we're, you know, all the Is or dotted, T's are crossed, we have legal backup for the continued sharing of services there. So, we're not outsourcing our building department to Ferndale, this is just memorializing kind of existing practices that we've begun with them to supplement our existing building department services.
Any questions for Jim? Do I have a motion to approve?
Mayor, I move the interlocal agreement between the city of Pleasant Ridge and the city of Ferndale regarding certain building department services be approved, and that the mayor be authorized to sign the agreement.
Is there support?
Support.
Any further discussion? Okay, can we vote?
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
You better hurry up, losing her quickly.
She's fading.
Commissioner Wall?
Yes.
Mayor Oscar?
Yes.
Next item is the agreement between the city of Pleasant Ridge and Oakland County Equalization Division for property assessing services.
This memo's from Amy, but I'm not going to make it. This is a renewal of the contract that the city has with Oakland County to provide assessing services. They have a deep and broad and a very good base of knowledge there. For us to provide assessing services for ourselves, we would be hard-pressed to provide the same level of professionalism at any rate of the cost that they do it for us, so. This renewal does include a 1% per year increase in future years, beginning next year, which is below what the rate of inflation has been in recent years. So, staff is certainly recommending the renewal of the contract with Oakland County.
Any questions for Jim? Pretty straightforward. Okay. Is there a motion to approve?
Mayor?
This is true. This is true, isn't it?
There you go. I move the agreement with Oakland County Equalization Division Assistant Services for Assessing Services effective July 1, 2019, through June 30, 2022, be approved, and that the mayor and city clerk be authorized to sign the agreement.
Is there support?
Okay.
I just want you to know, we didn't plan this.
I know. I'm being bossy.
May we have a vote, please?
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Wall?
Yes.
Commissioner Krzyak?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Mayor Oscar?
Yes. Motion carries.
We have to move along, Amy needs to go home.
I know. City commission's now moving into a closed session under Section 8E of the Open Meetings Act to consult with our attorney regarding trial or settlement strategy in connection with USC 18-1253, Stallworth versus City of Pleasant Ridge at all. Does it have a catalyst to a...
No, we have to make a motion.
Oh, that's right, we need a motion, sorry.
Your Honor, I move the Pleasant Ridge City Commission move into closed session under Section 8E of the Open Meetings Act to consult with our attorney regarding trial or settlement strategy in connection with the USC 18-1253, Stallworth versus... strategy in connection with the USCA 18-1253, Stallworth versus City Pleasant Ridge at all.
Is there support?
Support. You're faster.
May we vote, please?
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Wall?
Yes.
Commissioner Krzyak?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Mayor Metzger?
Yes. Moving into closed session. Now, can we vote? No.
Yeah.
Were you sick? Got what he... All right. Was that why?
Are we reconvening the meeting?
Let's go!
Do I have a motion?
Oh, we need a motion.
I would like to make a, I would like to make a motion to...
Do we have to reopen the meeting?
We already did.
Oh, we did. Okay, fine.
So, I would like to make a motion to receive the recommendation of counsel in connection with USCA 18-1253, Stallworth versus City of Pleasant Ridge at all.
To accept?
To accept.
Okay.
Second?
Second. Mayor, we take a vote.
Commissioner Krzyak?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Wall?
Yes.
Mayor Metzger?
Yes. Motion carries. Okay. Moving on. City Managers' Report.
Yay! The puppy.
I have, for the Manager's Report, I just want to update the commission and the community that I would regret that I inform you that Scott Petersak, Assistant City Manager, Recreation Director, resigned yesterday. No reason was given, but his resignation was effective immediately. So, Shawnee Stamper is the interim Recreation Director, and we are moving forward. All services will continue as normal and we'll continue to get the pieces in place. We're gonna, Shawnee's gonna be running Recreation Department for a while while we figure out what we're gonna do long-term with replacing Scott and how we do that. So, that's all I have for tonight.
That's it?
Thank you.
Thank you. Other business. I'm gonna jump in before the book report, just because...
Go ahead, go ahead.
I just wanted to remind people, and there will be posting on the websites, that DTE is going to be having an open house in Pleasant Ridge at the community center in the big room on, next week from this Thursday, 4/18, from 4:00 to 7:00. And they will be setting, setting it up where they will have engineers, they'll have tree cutters, they'll have a number of other people that can, you can talk to, but they will also, as you enter the big room, you give your address, and they will send you, they will set it up such that those who are on different circuits, the way the city is divided up into four different circuits, they will handle specific circuit-related issues. So, you will go, so you will go to a designated area, and you will be still be able to talk to engineers, to tree, and get your questions, but they will be more specific.
That's awesome.
You'll be talking with people who know your particular area. So, I think it's gonna be very beneficial, I hope, in a three-hour period, so that should be plenty of time for people to try to get up there and spend a little time. So, I encourage folks, DTE is, again, as we've said, they've been monitoring our website, our Facebook pages, and responding to residents, giving out their own personal phone numbers. We've had a number of issues that have been handled very well, so we'll keep this, keep this up. The intentional outage that was done last Thursday, yeah, on the 4th, went very well, went exactly the way DTE had scheduled it. I think some people were surprised, even though they hadn't gotten, they hadn't gotten phone calls, or claimed they hadn't gotten phone calls. So, make sure you should, make sure that DTE has a number where they can reach you if necessary to. So, anyway, DTE open house, so looking forward to it.
Yeah. Well, thank you, Mayor, and I want to thank you for the work you've done on this. I know, you know, instituting some of those lines of communication are not always, you know, that easy, and I appreciate what you're doing on behalf of the residents. I think this is something that has been a long time coming for the open house, and I think it'll be, you know, a great opportunity. So, thank you for working on that.
Thanks for that.
The day before the open house will be the April edition of the book club. We're reading The Boston Girl by Anita Diamond. This is a whole lot of fun. It addresses the cultural differences between generations. The Boston Girl, her parents are recent European immigrants. They relocated to Boston, and she just embraces all of what America and American arts and literature and has to offer, and just jumps in. And I'm about a quarter way into it. It's, it's really a great read, and I look forward to finishing it and talking to neighbors next week. 7:00 at the community center next Wednesday, April 17th, the night before the DTE open house, The Boston Girl. Hope you can join us.
Great, thank you. Any other amendments?
Amanda, what was the date for the Fern Care fundraiser?
That's what I, I have it to talk about. So, for those of you who don't know, Fern Care is a great organization in our, you know, in our area in Ferndale, that if you don't have insurance, they will provide, they will provide free insurance for you. So, they're having a benefit on Thursday, May 23rd, at the Detroit Yacht Club. The tickets are $75, it's 6 to 9. It's a really fun event. I've been going every year. It's just a really great organization that helps a lot of people, a lot of local people. I want to also make a push for the auction, since it's next month, Saturday, February 18th, in the big...
May 18th?
I think if you have all heard me say this, but I'm gonna say it, for those of you who don't know, Pleasant Ridge is experiencing their 100-year anniversary this year.
Really?
Yes.
Wow.
We're all experiencing it together, so we're gonna celebrate that with the auction. So, we hope you come and, you know, embrace the foundation, and that money will go, we're gonna be, the foundation's going to be providing new lighting for Gainesboro Park, is one of the projects, and there's a lot of good things that they do. So, hope to see you there.
Cool.
Thank you. Will you tell us about the fountain, by the way? Since we brought that up, that was the last...
Yeah, they're also, they're also donating to the fountain. They're gonna be redoing the fountain right out here in, is it Hustle Park?
Memorial.
Memorial Park, sorry, I apologize. So, the fountain has been broken for years, is about ready to be, be not fixed, but there's a new one going in there, so be excited. Be very excited.
So, they're partnering with the Garden Club?
Yes, the Garden Club as well. The Garden Club's executing this. They're passionate about this project, so they've taken it on, and they came to the foundation and asked for a partnership, and the foundation decided to partner with them to help get it done.
Great.
And there is, on the city website, there is a social funding site page, something to hook in to, so we'll make sure to promote that a little bit.
Yeah, it's gonna be a lot of great things this spring coming, fall.
Any?
Oh, I should also, I'm sorry, one more thing I should talk about. We're gonna be having 100-year celebrations coming, June 7th? Friday, June 7th is the first one. And then we're going also have September, September 7th?
Thereabouts.
Get banned from me. We'll be promoting, but look, look for two major events, and a lot of fun things celebrating our 100-year anniversary.
Yay!
Yeah!
Very good. Okay. Anything else?
I'm all set.
All right. Just there. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Alligator?
Aye.
We are adjourned.
Yeah.